All right, it's 6:30 and
No, I don't.
In keeping with past practice, I will begin the meeting now. Welcome, everyone. The Board of Education acknowledges that we are on the traditional territories of the Comox First Nations. We would like to thank them for the privilege of living on their land and for the gift of working with their children. Welcome, and I'm glad to see so many people here tonight. Adoption of the agenda. We have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the February 18th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda as presented. There's one item for consideration and a meeting of a board committee meeting such as this, a meeting of the whole, is an opportunity for the public to see the Board in action as a committee. It is open for your observation. It is usually a one-subject Board meeting, a one-subject committee meeting. In this case, it's boundary catchment consultations. The purpose is for the Board to ask questions of the senior staff as they deliver their report. There will be no opportunity for the public to ask any questions whatsoever. It's not that kind of a meeting. And I think it's very positive that this report's coming out to a Board that, for the most part, attended, the majority attended every single consultation, read every single survey, every single email, every single text. So they're very well-versed in everything that was said by everybody for the last two years since we started last year in the spring. And if you were on the Board previous to that, this consultation and the concerns and such were raised as part of the Long Range Facilities Plan over four years ago. So we've known about it and we've gone through it at this point. And we have a finished report that the senior staff will deliver. So I will look for the recommendation or the motion. Do I have a mover? Tanya, our trustee Fowley, seconded, trustee Hough. Thank you very much. At this point then, with the boundary consultation catchment report on the table in front of our superintendent, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you very much and thank you. Just to let people know and those viewing us, the minute the meeting is over, the report will be posted on our website. And folks in the audience tonight, as you leave a copy of the recommendation portion of the report will be available for you. The appendices of the report that I'll be handing out to trustees this evening are also available on the website as they stand right now. So there's nothing that you're seeing trustees be getting that isn't available to you. And that information will come at the end of our meeting. So keeping that in mind, I would ask that trustees be given a copy of the report with the extras returned here. So this is, the first half of this presentation will be a discussion and sort of bring us to speed as to how we got here, why we're here, and then with an eye to what are the recommendations? What did we hear? What are the recommendations? And finally, an implementation schedule, suggested implementation schedule and timeframe. So some background. In 2016, the Board of Education engaged Cascade Facilities Management Consultants in developing a long-range facility plan. And that long-range facility plan is, the purpose of it is to manage, to help the district manage facilities in an efficient, effective, and economic way to support the educational goals of our strategic plan. So you can see right off the bat, the plan that was developed in 2018 reflected the goals of the previous strategic plan. It also, in that plan, it identified six areas. The first four areas dealt with seismic upgrades, Lake Trail, Courtney Elementary, in addition to Mark Isfeld modular replacement and a school replacement at Punlich Park. There was another comment in that long-range facility plan that dealt with district organization. In a broader sense, this refers to all things, including boundaries and configuration. The district began to examine its structure in 2017 when great changes were made to the West Side schools. Arden, Courtney Elementary, and a Cole-Punlich Park at that juncture in time were redesigned to become K-5 schools, and all the sixes were moved to Lake Trail. This change was made to accommodate population growth in that area. While this was happening, the district began to keep an eye out on growth throughout our other areas. Specifically, Cumberland, Royston, Uban, and Miracle Beach began to see some growth occurring. Now, some additional background around Cumberland. A major shift in 2013 when Cumberland Junior and Cumberland Elementary were amalgamated to become Cumberland Community School, K-9 facility. And at that point, the old medical building was purchased, renovated, to become a viable educational space known as a Perseverance Building. At that point, Cumberland had not grown to what we've seen today, and the space in the facility was adequate. From 2016 to 2019, population grew. The more demand for instructional spaces and work created in this school with some, and not only in Cumberland and some of our other buildings where spaces were repurposed. We find ourselves in a unique situation where the population continues to grow. And as was mentioned, the growth that we're seeing in those areas and projected in those areas cannot be dealt with simply by a boundary shift. And this isn't going to work. Maybe it helps if I turn it on. So if we take a look at our current problem. Royston Elementary, the operating capacity of the school is 205. However, the adjusted capacity, which includes the modular classrooms, is at 255. When you look out, population as predicted by 2024 brings us to 368. And these figures, by the way, are all available on the information online. The enrollment projection shows the school population continues to grow. And one of the things that we had to consider when making this is that the school's on a septic system. So we needed to find out, would that impact the decision? Could it be dealt with, or did we have to look at an alternate way of dealing with it? The operating capacity, now moving up the street to Cumberland. In Cumberland, the operating capacity of the community school is 545. However, with the adjusted, which includes the modulators, it's 595. So 595 and out to 2024, everything being equal, we're looking at a population of 746 if everything was kept the same. Repurposing space alone will not deal with this growth in that area. Royston and Cumberland, we determined that we need to look at capital expansion. There's no way that a boundary shift alone and repurposing will deal with it. Uban Park, operating capacity 364, adjusted capacity of 389, and goes out to approximately 439 in 2024. The issued Uban, it's on a sewage treatment plant, and so that's a further consideration as we move forward. Can it's not, will it handle it? That would have to be analyzed. It seems to be operating now at very effectively, so we're hoping it's turned the corner. But the question is, can it accommodate those large numbers? That's something we must consider. The other thing, unlike Cumberland and Royston to a certain extent, is the hallway capacity, the library capacity of Uban is not going to get any bigger. And there was questions on the space, so those things need to be taken into consideration. Our last school that we looked at, Mercy Miracle Beach. The operating capacity of Miracle Beach is 229, however, the adjusted capacity, including the modulators, is 254. In 2024, the projected enrollment is 280, so not significant from where the adjusted capacity is. Growth is steady, but it appears can be manageable. One of the other things that we looked at around this was, in making these decisions and looking at the problem, could we also address some of the imbalances at our secondary school? And so that lens, we looked at when we're making adjustments and recommendations. What is it possible, or is it possible, that we can help our secondary situation? So let's take a look at our process. In the spring of 2019, we began by engaging our community in consultations. We referred to that as the pre-consultation rounds. It was two weeks in May. And the feedback that we received helped us shape what round-one consultations, which occurred in November, would look like. What kind of information did the public ask for? What were they interested in hearing about? In the fall of 2019, round-one began. And the dates were November 4th in Royston, the 6th in Cumberland, the 12th in Miracle Beach, and the 13th at Uban. Again, participants were given the opportunity to ask questions, provide ideas to create space in schools, and give suggestions of how to balance enrollment while maintaining neighborhood schools. It's clear that one of the concerns was disrupt as few students as possible in this process. Again, throughout all this process, all the information we received was posted back up and has been on our website since. In addition to the face-to-face and round-one, a survey was complete, and we received over 1,700 participants into that survey. That feedback is collated and is available for trustees in a resource binder. Most people have seen those survey results as they were sent to you. Due to the incredible amount of feedback, we decided we needed to wait and postpone round-two so we could go through all of the information and help us create some options. Round-two began in January of 2020. And how it was presented is, we looked at it, we presented five options, each with puzzle pieces, facets, whatever you want to call it, five made up each of the options. One of the things we instructed everybody is, there was the ability at any point in time to take a piece from option A or one and move it, combine it with a different piece from a different option to create a new one. There's so many variables and so many different options that we could make. We decided we'd present five and then we would allow people to provide some feedback. We did receive lots of feedback on that, and again, there was an online survey for parents. In the situation of Cumberland, we conducted a student survey and a place speak, a feedback forum was also engaged. The consultation process involved approximately 40 hours of public face-to-face consultation as well as many avenues for the community to provide feedback, ideas, and suggestions. This is in line with our Board Policy 20, which deals with communication and community engagement that the Board has developed, and this entire process was conducted underneath that. Moving forth, let's start with Royston. And what we're going to do is I'm going to ask one of the senior leaders to share and answer the question. What did we hear about the school in this case? And then we will talk about what our recommendation is for each of these. And I think trustees, I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, how you'd like to handle this, whether we'd like to present all of them first or individually and then questions? We're open to either one, so. As a matter of. So I'll start with Mr. Manning. If you want to share, what did we hear in Royston?
Okay, so I'll just share with you in general what we heard at Royston. I won't come up with a list of the, you know, 200 comments that were made. But in general, we heard parents say, "We want to keep the school whole. Please keep it a K-6." We also heard, "Can we make it K-7?" "We definitely want to keep the kids here." "Can we apply for capital expansion?" "Can we just add modulators?" "How many modulators can we add to keep people?" And we heard, "Don't split off one part of the community and send it to another school."
So Jeff brings up a good point. I just want to remind folks, if we haven't listened, doesn't mean we didn't hear it. We're trying to capture without reading all 1,700 comments if they're applicable. So our recommendations are as follows. Grade six students to remain at Royston. Add one modular in 2020 to address the enrollment projection. An additional modular will be needed in 2021 as enrollment is projected to grow up to 325. All cross-boundary transfers to Royston will be closed. And begin the capital expansion planning for Royston. There's the adjusted capacity, and there's what it would look like. So obviously, modulators would need to be added. We have checked with our Director of Operations, and yes, it is on a septic system, but that septic system is designed to handle up to 400 is what we've been told. This will be available, so you don't have to worry about the photo. We'll have it before you have to save you some writing. So that's our recommendation around Royston.
Okay, then I would open it up so that we don't go bouncing back and forth. If trustees have an identified question with the information that has been provided, I would seek them to ask that now. Seeing no questions at this point, we will move on to the next recommendation.
I would ask Mr. Douglas to comment on our next area in Cumberland.
As Jeff said, we heard lots of things in Cumberland. Some parents said, "Keep the grade eight nights." Keep it a K-9 school. Keep kids going to Banyer, which we want in the future. Keep Royston students at Royston. Keep space for community school. Community school, definitely, on its ways for that. And if needed, bring in Washburn, please, to buy for capital.
Okay. So based on that, our recommendations are as follows. Grade nine students, move to Banyer. Renovate the classroom in the Strathcona Building and create space for 25 additional students. Leave the annex available for the community school. All cross-boundaries to Cumberland will be closed. And a modular may be needed within two to three years to meet anticipated growth. And as we've said along, we need to begin the capital expansion plan. There's what our numbers look like, adjusted capacity as it stands currently, without adding any modular structures, is 595. Reclaiming classroom space as we need it, which would have to occur in a couple of years. And then a modular addition around Cumberland.
As I did with Royston. Do trustees have any questions about the information provided? Trustee Wade.
Could somebody refresh my memory? What is currently in the Strathcona Building?
The Strathcona Building is the elementary building that's referred to. So it houses kindergarten, I believe, to grade five. And they also have a couple of modulators out behind that have classrooms. And one half of the annex is being used as a classroom there. So the room we're looking at refurbishing is an old classroom that was cut in half by a wall to create two office spaces.
Any other questions?
Is there going to be an opportunity to ask additional questions at the end of this?
Yeah.
Because my only issue with some of this stuff is that I'm assuming it's going to be answered later, so I just want to be able to ask a question later on.
Absolutely. Seeing none, on to the next section, recommendation.
Next one is Miracle Beach, and Jeff.
Yeah, the main thing we heard is, "Let's keep our grade eight students going to Banyer and not to Highland." Miracle Beach is one of those schools where we didn't have a situation where we were actually moving kids away from Miracle Beach. So it was more of a, which high school will those students feed? We heard loud and clear from Miracle Beach that they want to continue to feed Banyer. That's pretty much.
As we indicated to you, the population growth could be handled at Miracle Beach with some adjustments. So the recommendations are as follows. The elementary school will continue to feed Banyer. Repurposing the computer lab. Renovate the classroom and capture additional spaces as required. Cross-boundary transfers to Miracle Beach will be closed. And there is the adjusted capacity as it currently sits. And you can see the growth is steady, not fast. We feel it can be handled without major modulators or anything added to that one. On a side note, I will say that received some correspondence from some of the schools. Highland in particular, that was really looking forward to having the Miracle Beach students feed. And they were actually writing in support of that option. So it's been interesting seeing both sides of it, but that's where we came to. So that's Miracle Beach.
Any questions from trustees?
So repurposing the computer lab, we'd be looking at the computer parts?
Parts, yes, moving to laptop parts.
And then renovating the classroom and capture an additional classroom space? What classroom?
So the classroom space now would be used, is broken up into a couple of different sections. And that, they would be moving into the repurposed computer lab, and then that classroom that they're in would be turned back over to the classroom. And this would be working in conjunction with the school around the education space that's required, as well as the non-enrolling spaces, if I can use that term.
Seeing no further questions, on to the last recommendation.
Mr. Douglas.
Well, we hear Uban. Well, we heard the school's too crowded and the infrastructure cannot support the enrollment. These are spaces like the side of the library, the hallways, some of the purpose that we use for the classroom. We heard, "Have the cross-boundary students return to the catchment schools." Do not change any boundaries. We heard open up solo and new grade sixes and sevens there. And we also heard, "Don't include anyone. Leave the school the way it is." Don't include everything.
Okay, so based on this, our recommendations are as follows. All new cross-boundary transfers to Uban will be closed, including siblings. All current sixes and sevens will be grandfathered to Uban and will be able to complete their elementary years at Uban before moving on to Banyer. Effective September 2021, all other cross-boundary transfers that are at Uban will rescind, and those affected students will return to their catchment schools to finish elementary years. What that works out of the 40, and I believe it's a 47, 16 are from Air Court, 12 are Miracle Beach. That's the biggest composition of the 47, and there's a few others around the district. And I'll speak to that one in a little bit later, our implementation plan. If families of cross-boundary transfers at Uban choose to move for this coming September to their catchment school, the district would facilitate and make those arrangements and work with those families. Sorry. If no boundary catchment changes will be made, Uban students continue to go to Banyer after grade seven. There's the adjusted capacity as it stands right now. And when you look at it, we're not far off, able to deal with the space that we have because there is some space currently in there.
Question. Trustee Kate.
Couple of questions and a concern. I noticed that the schools that have been closed across boundary transfers all have before and after school daycare. And we know that daycare is a premium in this district, and many parents struggle to find daycare for their students. And therefore, sometimes cross-boundaries are there because mom and dad need to go to work, or a single parent needs to go work, and their daycare is in that cross-boundary catchment area. And not all our elementary schools have daycare. And that's a big concern provincial, district-wide. So that, to me, is a concern, and I understand the process, but when I see that, I see parents seeing that, well, all the schools, those daycares are now, to me, that's a concern that I have. And I know a lot of parents will have that concern. And I'm just wondering, what process will you look at, having conversations with those parents, especially the ones at Uban where it's been rescinded, where that daycare will be negatively impacted on that parent maybe attending work in that child heading at school? So that is a concern that I've seen I have.
And thank you. That's part of the reason why we went effective September 2021 on this one. The Miracle Beach, if you recall from the presentation, cross-boundaries to Miracle Beach and Uban were virtually the same. And we're not rescinding on Miracle Beach. We're just simply closing to new. Cumberland, their cross-boundaries, although appear to be great in number, they were all from Royston, which has been a natural feed to that school, Mr. Douglas, for 47 odd years. So there's not, so by closing it, we're simply saying anyone applying new to that building would be closed. And the same thing in Royston. The cross-boundaries were negligible in terms of how it impacted. So it would be close to any new cross-boundary request coming into the school. And Uban, that's the tough one. We put a delay in that, and that would be something that we as senior staff would have to work with with our daycare providers to see if we can help alleviate individual concerns, again, judging by where they're coming from. We have generated that list, and we would be working, starting immediately, if the Board chose to approve this recommendation, we would start our process to work with these.
Kind of follow-up to daycare question there, Mr. Chair? So the other thing is, you're looking at Airport Elementary School where some of these students come from. There is really no daycare at that school. Is there an opportunity for the district to maybe now work with the Minister of Education and be more proactive, being based on the budget today, talking about daycare, whatever it is, to maybe try and get a daycare there which will track some of those students? Is that something that is a district that we can now maybe possibly advocate for?
Yes, absolutely.
And my last question is price. When will we see the cost of this implementation, the cost of how it's doing this? Because portable's come under operational, and we've got some money set aside. And then when will that information come to the Board? Is my other question.
That'll be the second part of it. Once the recommendation and the final costing will come out. If you take a look at everything in terms of the costing as it stands, the additional modular in Royston was already in the plans and budgeted for, so that's already going in. And I'll explain a little bit more on the cost-saving or how we're going to address some of these costs of the modulators on the implementation. We'll get to that a little bit later. Mr. Douglas, do you want to comment on the?
I'm just answering to the daycare report. So Claudia and I, they run the file for our daycare, and they can't sell it inside the school. So my support is this, we would go and start a consultation, have conversations, and work with the possible expansion.
Thank you.
Trustee Wade first.
Do you have numbers available if, for Uban, to not rescind in 2021? So if we were to allow the families who are currently cross-border at Uban to stay, like they're staying in Royston, do you have the numbers available if anticipated?
So there's 47 cross-boundaries in there right now. So we would be, and again, I'd have to go back. I don't have the breakdown in terms of the grades. We have that information. We can have that available for you and send that out. Are you inquiring whether what the numbers would be was grandfathered? Or are you inquiring just the total numbers of the cross-boundaries?
Well, maybe it's both. So we have 42 cross?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven cross-boundaries. And they stayed.
You can add 47 to these numbers.
We would add 47, but then the sibling piece coming in was, I know that we had some rough, or the system gave us some rough numbers. I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't recall seeing how many siblings, because that would be predicting how many siblings are not yet enrolled. Jeff or Alan, do you remember seeing any of those information?
We actually don't have like sibling numbers that would be coming into kindergarten, for instance. We do have all the numbers for all the grades of the students who are currently cross-bound red in, so we could get you that information.
Yeah, and I think that was what my question was going to be, and it was similar to hers. So if the, once the sixes and sevens that are already allowed to complete their elementary years, what was the difference in the numbers? Like, how many sixes and sevens are going to be taken out of that equation, I guess, was those numbers?
I would just say, it's a little bit of a tricky question because if the Board were to approve this and families were to say, "Hey, the writing's on the wall. I'm going to leave now. That's going to affect the number count if they decide to go in their first year of implementation." But if everyone waited until the second year of implementation, until 2021. But if everyone waited until the second year of implementation, until 2021, we do have children to give you the exact numbers of kids after the sixes and sevens. I just don't have it off the top of my head.
Part, part of the no cross-boundaries or being closed to siblings would be if this was adopted as, or the recommendation was accepted, and it's 2021, you could have a grade six student, and they choose to stay for the two years. If a grade six student had a sibling, we wouldn't want them to start kindergarten for a year and then transfer. That's why we'd said we'd close, the recommendation would be to close it there. And at the same time, knowing that parents may choose to move their child, if they're, for example, five, and they know that potentially they could be required to move in grade seven, they may choose to move their child now. The reason for the delay is to provide notification to deal with some of the things that Trustee Kate, you pointed out around daycare that Mr. Douglas would be working on, and to begin as smooth a transition as possible. First, Mr. Khan?
Well, I actually had a very similar question in terms of in those forty-seven, are current grade six, sevens students included in how many? So how many are we really talking about? So it's all the same. I think all of us are asking for more breakdown.
Yeah, and we can, we can get that information for you and email it to you, so you have that information.
Yeah, how many current grade sixes and sevens would be staying, leaving behind? How many, if or is it forty-seven that are five and under, you know?
The forty-sevens across the board, all cross-boundaries.
So that'll probably help. And then, I, you know, I too have a lot of concerns around our, our childcare, daycare things. I think there's a difference for me in terms of the childcare or daycare, which I would consider, we do have huge deficit in the valley and have been working largely, and Alan's been very involved in the recent study and plans which are focused on the north part of the district, U-Ban and Miracle Beach, and planning to meet needs. And then we have the question of after-school, for and after-school care. Those things can look really different in terms of whether they need their own exclusive space or not, and how we respond. But definitely something that as we do this, we need to respond and probably consulting the parents who would be impacted and say, what were the basis of your decision to cross boundary? Is it still relevant? Is it about childcare? What do we do? So I think that's really interesting. Yeah, I, I'm, I think that there's still quite a lot of, of taking into account or listening to what those individual, what, what the impacts are. But, you know, we know we have to look at individual impacts one way or another.
The, the daycare, I can just comment?
Yes, sir.
On the daycare, as with many of our daycares in our current sites, when a need grows, we address it with space that was available. And we would look at that in some of these sites that we would move, and that would, that would be one of the things that we would be tasked with, hence the delay to give us that time. And yes, it would require a little bit of pressure on the system as it stands to buy us the year to make the transition and to, to work with families around.
Yeah, and lots of opportunities right now with the capital funding and other, other operational funding for the initiatives in the preschool community to get cracking on having sites located at the schools that don't have them, yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Trustee Hall?
I just had a question. I, I see here for U-Ban that things are effective 2021, so that's not this September, but next September.
Correct.
Is that going to carry through to these other recommendations? There's no timeline on the other recommendations?
There's, yeah.
And then is that going to be something that we get to weigh in on or speak to?
I, I can speak to the, the reason there's no timeframe with Miracle Beach is because it remains, we need the space, it's a renovation that has to happen, repurposing space. So it's pretty clear that that needs to occur. We're not bringing in modulators there. In Cumberland, by moving the nines, we could probably keep it as is for a year, maybe two, and then we could start the renovation. We'd work with our Director of Operations to renovate the space. And I'll, and I'll explain in the implementation plan how we would address the additional growth on the end of it. And Royston, as I mentioned earlier, we, before this process began, we got in the queue for a modular because it takes that long to get them built. So our Director of Operations was, was in the queue for that. So the modular that's in queue would be relocated. And if this was recommended, one of the decisions that they would look at is, and the Director of Operations spoke to me about it, is if this is approved and accepted, then we would look at where the modular is placed. Does it make sense if we're going for a capital expansion to move the modulators into a clump or have them located in a similar area? And again, knowing that what our timeframe would be, because the worst thing we want to do is put a modular in and find out that the capital expansion is going to occur right where the modulators are, so then we're moving them so that we can build. Rather, working with the architect, this is where the capital plan expansion would happen, so we're going to set the modular here to address the growth.
Do either Trustee Prowling or Trustee Huxby have anything to say?
Just get my name right. Yay!
Good. No? Trustee, oh, sorry. Yes, please.
I was just wondering with the restructuring and the recapturing of space, are any of the ISWs going to be affected as to?
I, I'm not sure. I, I'd have to refer you to, to Alan or Jeff in terms of the actual rooms. I know some are being moved, one space to another, but it's not a case where we're losing space. Those, those spaces will continue to exist. They may not be in the same location, but they will have a space for sure. And I'm thinking more Miracle Beach, I think is one, that we would move into a different space, but they would have a space for sure.
We were talking about that, you know, how they, they put several spaces in the audience, like we had some.
Excellent. Trustee Kate?
So mine is regarding boundary and catchment areas. And I know that this recommendation is that we don't change the boundaries and catchment areas, which is okay. But if you look at the development, especially in Area B, Block 71, Courtney, that area there, right on the border, which is part of the U-Ban, Quinisch area, that is all now structured for major residential development. At some time prior to houses being built and prior to those families moving in there and prior to him going to a neighborhood school, would the board entertain a conversation to how, look at maybe certainly those, when those, those registered, when those residential residents on the subdivisions are, they know what school they're going to prior to those houses being built? Because what we've heard over this consultation process is many people go to the real estate agent, go there and buy a house specifically because of a neighborhood school.
Yeah.
So as we go through this process and looking at all the development happening, especially with Block 71 down by Silvee, up at Crown Isle, or whatever it is, I think we need to have that conversation prior to those subdivisions happening as houses built, so people know when they're choosing to buy a house where their neighborhood school is prior to them buying a house. And I was wondering if that's something we can consider, please?
And that, that as we've talked about as a CUT, having had the opportunity to work with our municipal partners and the regional district to see where the, their OCPs and plans for developments, it's one thing that was brought up, is we can indicate now on our map that we use for school district purposes, that this subdivision will feed this school. So we can have a look at that. It's a very good point.
Trustee McDonald?
So I don't know, this is more a comment or reflection. I'm hoping that it may be, I'll be thinking about this more, and I want to, you would think about it a bit. I, I like this in a way, many ways of not passing too many kids too much more than that seems to be going. And we know in, I have, I have a lot of concerns about how far our kids from the Farbland quarters. Miracle Beach, U-Ban, you know, Royston School is capturing kids all the way down to Fenn Bay. And those grade eight, nines going into Vanyay. I, I understand many people think there's more opportunities, but my own sense is that, that the larger school, they have fewer opportunities and that there's a tendency to get lost. And I really like the model of our, our seven, eight, nines. I liked it when grade ten was in Cumberland, and it like, you know, lots of opportunities for this. When I look at this, I see Cumberland, thinking of Cumberland as a K-9 with 756, very large elementary school, it comes really, you know, we need to be really thinking. And so, but moving the grade nines out doesn't make me particularly happy either. I'd like to see them stay there. I'm going to be looking at it closely and thinking about whether a delay would let us look at some other options. I see that the kids who are going to Royston, some of whom are coming from a considerable distance down further south, will then be going for grade seven, eight at Cumberland, and then a further change to, to Vanyay, right? So they're the ones that are going to be in a school for not very long before they move, which, which may or may not be an issue. But we know that that area is going to keep growing too, and the prospects of a new school relating to the Union Bay expansion and, and our capital needs for Royston, you know, may include more space for that, for the nines. I mean, maybe we'd be making another K-9 school and making the numbers in Cumberland manageable. There's a whole bunch of pieces of the puzzle here where, where values are, the value of having kids bus less, but also the value of schools not getting too big. I mean, I see them in conflict. I don't know necessarily what the answer is, but I'm wondering if we might need to take a bit more time thinking about it.
Rather than take more time, it sounds like it would be a good discussion for another, for another meeting to look at.
Well, we're going to mill around, and then this is going to be presented to us for decisions. And it might be that parts of it we might also want to, want to defer in order to have those conversations. So there you go with my thoughts tonight.
Any other questions?
I just heard one about, I guess, the timing. I know I already asked about it. And I guess because I don't, I can't, I'm not seeing the budget, so I just don't know, like, have we extended the amount of funds that we have with, with this recommendation? Is it in its totality? Or is there opportunity, once we take the recommendations and start moving forward with things, at that time, being able to evaluate things like, okay, you know, this, we thought was going to be this much, it's not going to be that much anymore? Is there opportunity to put some money here to sort of elongate some plans? Is that sort of things that are going to be happening? Or how, how, I guess, does everything get implemented monetarily?
Yeah. Well, you cite the site, so I mean, if we start looking at Miracle Beach, what would have to occur right away is the repurposing. So I think on the, in the report and the presentation, we talked about, I want to say seventy thousand, sixty, seventy thousand dollars. So that's the cost to repurpose the American, that's finished there. Moving on, Royston was a modular, as I said, the modular is on order, and maybe I'll, I don't know if I have that this, I'll talk about it here. So the recommendations, see if it's here. There. So one of the things for the additional modulators that we may need is planning potentially, if those modulators are required, once Hornby is completed, there are modulators. So it would make sense to remove those modulators once the school's completed there, bring them here. Now it's a matter, so our cost is movement of the modulators, not ordering new ones and placing them. So significant cost reduction from the $300,000 that was quoted. And we have those modulators. How many, we don't know. There's, there's some things in Hornby that we have to finish with the planning, but there are at the district's disposal right now. So that's one way of dealing with the cost. The transportation cost, with the exception of Cumberland with the nines, to see what is the additional cost of the transportation of the nines? They're moving a year earlier, so what does that worth, work out with the numbers? And that's, we'd have to allow our Director of Operations to work with our transportation provider, see what, what the bus route would, would be there. U-Ban Park, again, if, if it's 2021, we have a year where we may have to, nothing changes drastically. You might have to look at the spaces to get a, see if everybody stays put for a year. After that, where our numbers go, we would have to find it. If it doesn't, if it isn't approved and the recommendation isn't approved, then we'd have to find a spot for these individuals. And what that would look like, I'm not sure, but we'll have to figure it out. Not sure modulators would be the answer in that particular location, but we'll, we'd tackle that and look at it. So a roundabout way, the funds, when you look at the, the recommendations of each of the individual areas, the initial cost, which is the modular that's already ordered at Royston, and the renovation in Miracle Beach, Cumberland, would see a renovation. Cumberland's the one that would go over probably three years. We'd see a, get by probably a year, two. So repurposing the space, not a huge dollar value. When we look at bringing in the modular, that hopefully ties into when Hornby is completed. And so it's a matter of just setting up the modular versus the $300,000 for a branded modular handset. So, so that would take care of that. And then the U-Ban one is, the issue around U-Ban, the cost is, is the, if we look at daycare and how does that work to facilitate families, is there associated cost for that?
Thank you. So I guess, I guess my question would just be, because I know it's the question that I'm going to be asked, so I'm just going to ask it. Is, is because of this, because there's potentially portables in the district, is there, is there any way of like stretching out that space and then, or is the, are the numbers changing so fast that you don't think that there's any way to avoid moving those students for the Cumberland, the grade nines?
The Cumberland one is, when you look at where the modulators would be needed, it's the same time that we'd have to add an additional one in Royston. And with not knowing the final number of modulators that are going to be left on the island or moved, they could present, there's where that cost could be. As we've said all along, one of the options was just simply adding modulators until we fixed it best. We chose not to recommend that for a variety of reasons, programming being one for the grade nines.
Trustee Lee?
Can I ask my question in a minute? But I was looking back on our option five that we had, and it listed that that was the option that had most of the costs associated to it. And so we haven't done everything in there to reach the point that we have allotted as a reserve. So I think I'm answering your question only because I always carry on my paper around.
Yeah.
But my, my question is, and it's, it's a question regarding the Cumberland Community School recommendation. And it's about the grade nines. And I'm not saying that I agree or disagree with moving the grade nines from Cumberland. But I have a concern that students, students that are currently in grade eight, who thought they were going to grade nine in Cumberland here, will have four months left in their school year to adjust to the fact that it might be their last time in, and, and schools have a lot of history and recognition and process that often a grade goes through when it's their last year at a school. And so my, my, my concern is that it's going to create some very unintended consequence for those grade eights, that it will now be potentially their last four months at the school, and they thought they had four months plus a school year at the school. And, and that, it hurts my heart to think about it. So, so I just, I, it's not a question, but, but, but more of a statement that, that, that if we, the recommendation- the recommendation had indicated that we would start this in twenty twenty-one, like, like the recommendation indicates in some other areas had staggered, that would give more opportunity for adjustment, if in fact that's a recommendation that's decided. And it might have been what Sarah Dean was asking a little bit about the money and the timeline, is that if this, something like that weren't to happen until twenty twenty-one, what would we need to do in terms of modulars and the kinds of resources that the school would need in order to run for another year with the numbers that it has and the numbers it's gonna get? That, and, so it wasn't really a question, but it was, there's a question in there somewhere?
I think you can, you can. Yeah, you can see by the numbers, if you added the fifty-nine, you can just, you would look at the numbers that we're recommending. Uh, and then Cumberland, adding fifty-nine to twenty twenty, we could probably, yeah, be close whether they could handle it. We'd have to bring in something.
Go ahead, Jeff.
We, we would, we would need to renovate that Stratton building for next school in order to accommodate this.
Yes. Now, I, I appreciate the comment and it is true, uh, students individually process change differently. And I'm not gonna speak for individual cases and how they would adjust. What I can tell you, and I would, uh, ask other folks who've worked in schools for many years, kids are very reserved. Um, when, maybe you guys could talk a little bit about the survey results you received, um, and Jeff?
Well, I just, you know, when we surveyed the grade eights and nines at Cumberland, seventy-three percent of the grade eights said that they favored a move to, to Vanier. And seventy-eight percent of the grade nines favor they, they, a move to, to Vanier. So, and we didn't, we didn't set that up in any way. We didn't tell them about all the great things that were happening in Vanier or the hardships of running a bus or any of that kind of thing. We just asked them the question, tried to be as unbiased as possible when we asked them the question.
Now, of course, that's the reality as it is. Obviously, and the reality is, it could be, it could be a different perspective. They, they may view it differently. Um, but that's always something that the board could look at and say, we like the recommendation, but could the timeframe be adjusted? And that would be a, uh, you know, a decision that could be made and you would look at that if we need to.
Trustee Farley?
So, um, mine is, is geared more towards the secondary side of things. So we have Cumberland, the possi-, you know, the recommendation of Cumberland grade nines going to Vanier, um, keeping Miracle Beach students feeding Vanier. Um, so if, if, if we're not making any shifts there, we're adding more students into Vanier, that's already bursting. So how are we going to address that end of things? Because now we're just feeding sixty more students, fifty-nine more students into Vanier. Um, and then, um, and then my next question is, I'm not seeing anywhere. So in our recommendations, it said about, um, Aspen and having that all be to Highland. And there's nothing in that about here unless it's later on?
No, it's not, there's not, because we, in the, that was my next step, so I was gonna talk about that. So I can, just use this chair. Uh, so looking at, again, when we looked at this, we thought, can we use this as an opportunity to balance our secondary? And as I explained, uh, in a couple of meetings, with secondary numbers, they're deceiving. The Vanier numbers did not include the modulars that were out back. And as I explained, how you can actually put in more than the capacity because you don't have students in every class and every hour of the day due to schedules and students taking before and after. So the enrollment is not a major issue that would affect it. How we would deal with it is what we did this year. We closed Vanier and Isfeld cross boundary transfers. So any students, so from Lake Trailer, Cumberland, that wanted to move and apply for cross boundary, the only cross boundaries that we approved were to Highland. And we were able to increase Highland's numbers twenty?
Yeah, by the twenty-two.
What's happened as a result of that, I was just speaking to Highland today, uh, they've received, I think Dean said, close to twenty phone calls already from students wanting to transfer over. So that's, if we do stop the cross boundary in those two, we would do the same thing. Our hope is that we would see an increase. The other thing that we have done is we have put a limit now on internationals, students at Vanier and Isfeld and opened it at Highland, which was another thing that we'd heard, something we looked at, worked with Greg at the international program. Can we do that to help the numbers at Highland? Which is something else we did, we would be looking at doing to help the pressure and use the space. So those two, it just did not seem, um, and again, if you follow the report, now if you look at the Hubein with sixteen students going back to Airport, that's now sixteen more students that will work their way through the system and their siblings. So we're, we're working at, at it. And the other thing that, that I think, um, trustees are aware of the Montessori program that was announced, we are also looking at other programs of choice possibly for air, uh, for Airport that may help in, uh, the long term.
Trustee McCall?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of glad that you've separated out that secondary thing. I didn't think that any of these changes made a huge difference to the high school question. And I think we have lots of others going for changing that. I think the opportunity for, uh, some really innovative programming at Highland in, um, our little studies, in, uh, moving their STEM and tech, technology programming. I would set Jeff Taylor and Dean Patterson's brilliant minds to work on sort of the Thomas Gani model, really not, you know, like, I think that school can, can stand it. I like, I took the comments from the, that we just received, really, you take it to heart. And I know how, there's a sense that people, that it's declining enrollment is because people don't value Highland or they aren't a great school. And it, it really was a demographic thing that happened, right? That, that Comox is not generating the same number of, of students and that will move through. So I think those opportunities, we just need to deal with it differently. But I'm gonna come back, I guess, to that question of, of Cumberland, the grade nines going down and, um, some alternatives to that. And because, um, it's, it's like, I, I feel like a one-year's delay would let us think about this. Because the other thing is that I see, if we're looking at Royston, we're looking at capital plans and continued growth down there, the opportunity to move the grade sevens back. I mean, we've made lots of changes that were temporary changes. And moving the grade sevens to Cumberland was a temporary decision because of Royston's capacity. And, uh, planning and looking at starting to hold them back. And I'd be interested to know how many that is and what effect that then has on Cumberland's numbers in that, in that age group, going through, how many students then who are, who are in, um, grade six and seven and moving in there? What, what difference does that make? And, and can I, again, Cumberland's one of our best opportunities for, uh, capital because, uh, it, you know, we're not on a septic area now, is that right? Or, but, and Royston is one of our best opportunities because the growth projections there for that whole area are so strong. So, um, that's, you know, that's the thing. Now, the other piece that you've heard me say is that I actually think that what we have done on the west side with moving grade sixes and sevens to Lake Trail, because Arden was full, um, is something that we should go back and look at again. It's, it li-, it's left when we say, oh, well, we have to increase capacity in all our schools because a school like Courtney, the numbers are down. But the numbers are down because we moved grade six and sevens who didn't need to move. We just did it because that was gonna be parity with Arden. And we know that there's a big cross boundary issue at Arden that we just didn't wanna deal with. So we found another solution, but it created other problems. It created Courtney L. not even being a possible solution for a cross boundary from the Ridge area, which is gonna keep growing. So it wasn't because we need to have a grade six, seven school to welcome them. And we don't have it because that's not what Courtney L. is. So there's a whole little.
I'm sorry, is there a question?
Well, the question is, in the next year, can we also look at some of the other areas where some of the steps we've taken were supposed to be temporary fixes? So we should go back and look at them again.
And that will be at the board's discretion?
Yeah. Oh, you guys are our leaders.
Um, so my question is to superintendent, and it was just more of, um, my concern. We all, we all talk about children are resilient, resilient, we say that a lot. Um, but when you look at, um, mental health, anxiety and the stress, that actually is really not, that's saying, I don't like saying that anymore. And coming from my family and experience that I've had in, in being provincial, we talk about mental health, pathway to hope on the, on that one there. So we've just now put out there that there's possibly these students at Hubein Elementary that are in ki-, that started at kindergarten in grade two or three, possibly they, they move. And I look at the anxiety, the level, kids today are anxious. Kids have anxiety and we have to, and, and, and I guess I'm gonna be on my soapbox on for here because that's just, I care about kids. But I also am concerned about the anxiety and stress and the mental well-being of all our students from K to twelve. Many of our students coming into elementary school, we, we don't understand that there are some stress in their family, whether things on that one there. So, and I know this district is amazing providing that resources for them. But I just want to, uh, maybe reassure parents that, that as a district, we care about our students. And if children are feeling anxiety with some of these lotions, I'd hope they feel comfortable talking to us as a district. The reassurance may be from the superintendent saying that we understand there's gonna be some anxiety and stress within our students, especially if you may have to be removed from your school through this process, that we're there to support them. And that would be my, my message. I'd like to get out there and just really, um, relay that to our, to our parents, that. Cause I know many students, um, in kindergarten, grade one, grade two, can't go to school from anxiety. You know, and we just, we just, we say kids are resilient. So I just want to, I'm sorry, I just have to say that normal kids are resilient.
And that's fine, as we've stated all along, we would work if the recommendation, no matter which recommendation the board chooses to pass, if they choose to say status quo, doing nothing, we will, as a senior staff, make it work. Should they choose to pass the recommendation here, we would work with those families as they're identified. And yes, and make sure that through student services, should they require the counseling support, it's there. Should they require the daycare support, working with our director of elementary to make sure that, is there anything we can do as a system? So that goes without saying. Once the decision is made, then the implementation starts. Um, they're, they're all very valid points. And then what we can tell you is that we would work with our communities and identify their specific needs and try and take our recommendations as we have to move forward, make them as, as seamless as possible given the situation.
And I think sometimes we have to keep saying that we're going to do that, so parents will hear us. And that's why I appreciate that comment. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions? Next steps?
So, next steps, as we talked about earlier, it's the, um, what happens now? Once the board has made a decision, then the recommendations, almost the decision and the timeframe. And we've heard some discussions evening around, is it best to do it all once? Is it best to do it at twenty twenty, September twenty twenty? Is it best to do it September twenty twenty-one or have it gradual? And I can tell you, the, the will of the board is, is what senior staff would take the direction. And if we, the direction was to look at, can we delay one particular aspect? We could look at that and, and provide a report back on what that would mean. Um, once the decision and in terms of, if the recommendations are accepted as is, then we would be working with the schools, the school communities and any of those affected families around making the, the changes and making sure it's communicated how, and beginning our next steps as, as we would in, during any other major change in our district. So the, it's just starting, this is the first part of it. And then we would wait for the board's decision and direction.
Question, Sheldon?
Yeah, so I have a couple of questions about process. Um, because there's, I'm gonna say there, are there four recommendations here or is it one big recommendation? Um, and, and how do we deal with that? One, two, five, are there, are there four recommendations or is there one? Do we have to accept everything or nothing?
No.
If there was nuance or adjustment to it, how, how do we do that, given the timeframe that, that we're looking at? And then I have a couple more questions, but.
Our recommendation would be, um, that we present this as a package for implementation as, as it is. Now, trustees could choose to say we would accept the recommendation for school A D and C and, or they could say we accept the recommendation however we want, we would like the implementation plan that has been presented as a twenty twenty-one to be, to be reflective of all. And if you look at, when you look at it, for example, uh, Miracle Beach, and I'll just use that as an example, the only change there is we're just gonna do some infrastructure change. And they continue to go where they're going to school. So there really is not much change that needs to happen at that particular site. So whether, we would have to, that one has to happen right away because we need the space for September. So we would begin that process. Um, Royston, if it's accepted as is, we would get our director of operations to begin the planning stage of not only the capital expansion, but where the modulars would sit so that they don't interfere. So those two are, the big ones are Cumberland and Hubein. And so I guess you could accept the recommendations for two and say, effective immediately because it would make sense to, to delay those two. But the other ones you could look at, Hubein's already has a delayed start. Cumberland would be if, if the numbers worked out to leave it as is for a year and, or add it to the same delayed start. So I think through the discussion at the board meeting and motions put forward, they can be altered and accepted individually.
And can I ask a question about why something wasn't considered?
Sure.
So for, for Hubein, um, in option five, there was a solution that said, add one modular, no new, no new cross, um, transfers, all existing students stay. Um, and that wasn't, that.
We didn't, we didn't look at that because of the feedback we received for two years about the pressure on the infrastructure, the hallways, the lack of the multipurpose space, the libraries, just the general overcrowding. And we, we've heard clearly at, at school reviews, at, at meetings when district staff or president or trustees, the letters we've received for two years, that was a common, uh, message that was given to us. So we felt that we needed to look at that in response to what the community has told us at that moment in time.
Any other questions?
First of all, I think from all the information, like, I don't know how all of you guys feel, but I feel like I've just been like so immersed in this process the entire time and like really emotionally, um, impacted by everything and everybody's feedback. Um, and I think, like, I couldn't be more proud of you guys for doing this in, in a really effective way, really. Like, I mean, it, this is really, really close to, um, what I think the exact best plan is. Um, and so I think that's amazing. And, uh, yeah, I, I'm, I, um, the only thing that I would ask as one last little shoot is that, uh, if, if, um, we could just look at the timeframes, just, I don't think that's enough time to make decisions. A few months, I think, students and parents, um, when you're in tiny communities, and all four of these schools are in tiny communities. I mean, obviously, the kids that aren't going anywhere don't need time. But for the, for the two schools where kids are, are being moved or not being able, like, they're having major adjustments, whether it be care or friendship or, or just moving or thinking that they were gonna grad one year and live not or whatever the case may be, um, yeah, that's all. But I think, um, But I think after that, yeah, I would just really like to congratulate you guys. There was a lot of information to, and I think like the options were surprisingly the least impactful. But as they could have been, I guess. And I, I hope as we go through this process, you know, with the finances that we have, there can be adjustments that you could look at later. But.
Yeah, I think that, I think that all, we can be really proud of this process. It's so very different from, from the other ones where we sort of generated a lot of conflict and a lot of emotions around that. And I know that lots of parents were expecting that, but I think that they will feel that they've been heard. And, and I know we all definitely were there in listening and hearing things. So, you know, I'm going to make a flaky comment in a minute. But first of all, I do note, I mean, it's going to be about more couples, right? You know that, it's coming. In the case of Cumberland, if the adjusted capacity right now, the school is 595. We could keep the grade eights for a further year at least with them still being within that capacity. We could be hearing some of the others and we could be flipping during that year and respond. So that's just, it is a possibility from the numbers that I'm reading. There may be other factors that you're also taking into account. Yeah, so my flaky idea here is just that I think that, that these schools, to one of our other, one of the other solutions, as you're talking about the secondary schools where students are, gym students are there. It doesn't happen as much in elementary where kids have a classroom and all that. But we have an enormous initiative in the district, a real interest and energy around outdoor learning. And so developing our outdoor learning spaces in those, in Hubein, the school where, where the outdoor learning class is very rarely in its classroom. They are, in fact, the teacher said he didn't really need a classroom because those kids are out all the time. And that's a goal, and that's a common theme up in Cumberland too. So in terms of some of the pressures that it is, there are opportunities around our schools as really exciting learning spaces that are about, this is all about boxes. And yet our schools are a base for learning that happens outside the boxes. And I've seen, I mean, on Courtney, we're going to be really happy to have this school that's being planned. But the way the modulars are set in a configuration around a covered learning space has been really, really, really successful.
Thank you, trustee McDonald. We're going to have a in camera meeting shortly. So I'm going to move us along, and I know that your passion for in.
Don't do that.
In, in.
Don't do that.
I know your passion and I appreciate it. And we will have a chance to discuss those options. But at this point, that's not a question around this plan, and that's the purpose of this. And I need to move us on for that reason. Anything else though, any other question?
I just wanted to really make sure I pointed out as trustees, you have appendix A, B, and C. You'll notice appendix A has different numbers than appendix C or B and C. And that's because they were based on the Barragart projections from 2018. So they were based on a whole different set of numbers. I just, I just didn't want you to be confused by that. Because that, that information went out in the spring of last year. And that's why we used the previous year's numbers. So that B and C were from this fall and just recently.
Oh, you've noted that here?
Yeah, and it's noted on the front page, but if you were looking at saying, please, don't add up, that's why.
Thank you.
Anything else at this point? Okay, then I'm going to seek a motion to adjourn. There will be copies of the first part of this document. And Alan will have those at the door.
You can sign them, write your autograph?
The copies that Josh has.
Yeah. There you go. And as I say, trustees, you need to stay for an in camera meeting after. And I thank the audience for being here and for you, the document will be there to be received.